Very good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, November 12th, 2014. It is my pleasure to call the City of Burnsville Planning Commission Meeting to order. Welcome, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Welcome, Chair. Our members of the viewing and listening audience, we welcome you. Thank you for tuning us in. Today's meeting has five items on the agenda, and it's as follows. Item one, adoption of the agenda. Item two, approval of the minutes from the October 27th, 2014 meeting. Item three, a public hearing, application for NUSCO leasing, Six LLC and YRC Inc. for a preliminary and final plat to be known as YRC N-U-S-S addition, located at 12400 and 12540 Dupont Avenue South. NUSCO leasing has also requested a planned unit development to allow an interim use permit for outdoor storage and display. Item four, a work plan, item LED light band discussion. Item five, updates. Any additions to the agenda, Commissioners?
None from me, Chair.
None from staff? None. Do I hear a motion to approve the, to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Radrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two, four, five, five, zero vote carried. Item two, approval of the minutes from the October 27th, 2014 meeting. I hope you have had a chance to view the minutes. Any changes, corrections? None from Commissioners? Our staff?
None from staff.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taheri. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass on a five, zero vote. Our next item is item three, a public hearing, application from NUSCO leasing, Six LLC and YRC Inc. for a preliminary and final plat to be known as YRC N-U-S-S addition, located at 12400 and 12540 Dupont Avenue South. NUSCO leasing has also requested a planned unit development to allow an interim use permit for outdoor storage and display. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
For the Commission, this is a public hearing. We indicated there are two property owners involved and a number of parcels involved with the project. We get to vote in just a minute. NUSCO leasing, Six LLC, as well as YRC are the two property owners. Both are, I should say, all of the properties involved are zoned GIM, which is Gateway Industrial Heavy. They are located in the, in our Gateway Design Standards District, as well as guided Minnesota River Quadrant in our comprehensive plan. There are two properties tied, or two addresses tied to the project as well. NUSCO leasing, NUS Trucking is located here. Yellow Freight, or also known as YRC, encompasses three different parcels, and they're located on the Visual Aid in front of you also. Everything adjacent to these parcels is zoned GIM. You'll note everything to the south of 126th Street is zoned B4, also in the Gateway District. YRC operates a trucking terminal at 12400 Dupont Avenue. That is this parcel right here. That, in total, encompasses 59 acres. The YRC facility has never been platted. That will come into discussion as we move forward. And part of the project at hand this evening is YRC selling 1.7 acres to NUS Trucking, and that would be the 1.7 acres located right here. Currently exists as green space, is under the ownership of YRC. NUS Trucking is located right here. Let's see. NUS Trucking Equipment sells leases, services, new and used trucks, as well as heavy construction equipment, loaders, backhoes, excavators, graders, et cetera. We'll hear from NUS Trucking later this evening, and they can give you a little more insight into their business. They currently exist on 2.6 acres on their current facility. They are looking to expand both the size of their facility, they're looking at an addition to the shop, and they're looking at additional storage and display area. That's what's driving a lot of the project that you see here this evening. I'm going to go in just a little bit different order. In your packet, the site plan and specific information to NUS was up front. I'm going to jump to the plat, which really, and then we'll somewhat back into the NUS IUP and PUD. As I indicated, YRC is not a platted facility. One of the great benefits of this project would be right-of-way being dedicated. This is known as Kenwood Trail. It would be the extension of County Road 5, although it would not be under county jurisdiction. It would be city property. This is part of the city's larger transportation plan that would weave an access point over to Cliff Road and the Cliff Road interchange with 35W. The plating of this right-of-way is a great benefit to the city. It's something we've had plans for and will be working on for a long time, so this is a big chunk of land that would move us in that direction. Mr. Peterson can get into some of those details as we move on, but I wanted to point that out. From NUS Trucking's standpoint, again, they need to purchase or they are pursuing 1.7 acres from YRC. That would be part of this plat. It would create Lot 1, Block 1, YRC-NUS addition. All of that would be under the control of NUS and would help facilitate their expansions. Again, they are looking at a 12,000 square foot building addition that would double the size of their facility right now. It would also lend to greater area for storage and display of their trucks, heavy equipment, vehicles that they're leasing or selling, as well as greater mobility for vehicles they're bringing into the yard that are in need of service or parts. The interim use permit is needed for the outdoor storage and display. Staff is recommending a termination of that interim use permit January 1st, 2035. That would be 20 years and just a few months from right now. This is very similar to the RDO application the Plan Commission and Council saw in 2013. That was also a 20-year interim use permit. That ends January 1st, 2034. This is also in a timeline with the mining and soil remediation work that Assaford Family Partnerships has received in this immediate area. Their IUPs over a number of different parcels expire January 1st, 2027. So within a few years of the timeline we're talking about now. The benefits of the PUD and the IUP, there are obviously a number of benefits for the applicant. From the city's standpoint, we see this being part of our larger vision for the MRQ. We are not looking for long-term outdoor sales and storage of vehicles. The building addition, although it is needed for NUS Trucking right now, it's not necessarily going to lend itself to office or office warehouse. The use is that the city is looking for long-term in the MRQ. The timeframe and the requirement to remove those buildings is consistent. It lends itself to vacant property that can be redeveloped, however a future developer sees fit. And then also moving, moving things inside, whether it be office warehouse, office, any number of uses. As I indicated, there are a number of conditions. We'll get to those at the end of the presentation that outline, in similar fashion, the requirements that the city put on RDO in 2013. As it currently exists, I'll just back up one site. Both Yellow Freight and NUS Trucking exist as non-conforming uses. They currently have no time deadlines or timeframes where that land use would expire. They are established in the city and can maintain their operations indefinitely. The exception to that would be in a building addition, just like we're talking about with NUS tonight. The same would apply to YRC. They're able to operate as-is. They're able to repair, maintain their facilities, but when it comes to expanding that, especially expanding the building or the footprint of their operation, that is where the interim use permit is needed, which gives the city the authority to approve the expansion as well as put certain time restrictions on that. This is a glimpse of the final plat. This was also included in your packet. It does provide for an outlot to be owned by YRC. This would be future development at which, likely, at which time Kenwood Trail is constructed and provides access to this area. The balance of YRC would be platted into one lot, which is beneficial, especially for the city with the proper easements and legal descriptions to encompass all of the buildings. Currently, there's buildings running through, or there's property lines running through buildings in a number of items out there. And what you see down at the right-hand corner would be the finished product for NUS Trucking. That would be the facility they're working off for expansion. Now, the next few items I'm going to review is specific for NUS Trucking. It does not necessarily relate to YRC. When we're discussing PUDs, we often look at the benefits as well as the deviations. We'll get into more benefits as we move along, but there are a number of deviations I wanted to cover. The first would be the use of gravel surface within the site. The applicant's proposing a gravel yard in this area, as well as retaining the existing gravel in this area. Typically, or I should say, the ordinance requires a dust-free hard surface. Because of the vehicles we're dealing with, or that NUS is dealing with, the weight, specifically the track equipment that comes in and out of there, staff is supportive of a gravel yard rather than a bituminous that would be quickly eaten up and beat up by the gravel, or excuse me, by the tracks. We're also looking at a surmountable curb in a couple locations. This is internal to the site. It is, it is not around the perimeter of the site and would not match in with any curb within the right-of-way. Again, this allows easy access of equipment, trucks and trailers to move between these gravel yards and the bituminous surface, specifically when they're loading, unloading, and transporting some of these vehicles. And the last would be a deviation for the screening. This gravel yard will be used for essentially storage vehicles coming and going. Indicated on the site plan are some display pads. These will be more for NUS to display vehicles and trucks they have for sale on lease. The storage area is located in here. We typically require anything within the storage area be screened. When you're dealing with loaders and excavators and other pieces of large equipment, staff is comfortable with a deviation to those requirements. In total, this would, I apologize, I just had that number in front of me. In total, the NUS site you're looking at, 4.3 acres to develop. The applicant is proposing 30% green space. That is the minimum required within the zoning district. Staff sees that as a benefit. The current facility represents right now, I believe, 16% green. There's a significant amount of gravel out there. There's also some, some outdoor storage and other things the applicant has agreed to clean up. They're looking for a appealing facility, an opportunity to upgrade and enlarge their business, and staff certainly sees the benefit in that. Another deviation I wanted to mention would be the use of metal panels on the addition. Looking at the top image, this is the existing facility. The office is on the right-hand side. Here's a floor plan of the facility, the existing shop. Everything from this line to the left will be the expansion. Again, large overhead doors, the ability to move those larger pieces of equipment in and out. In this situation, they also have the benefit of bringing a vehicle in and driving it straight through, and the ability to exit on the other side so that if it does, if it's a piece of equipment that's on a trailer, the whole assembly can come in and go out the north side. Again, similar with RDO, the applicant is proposing a metal panel. It would have a skin on it, very similar to a stucco or an ephist texture. So from the street or even up close, it's not going to look as though it's metal, but from an economical standpoint and ease of construction, the applicant's proposing that. Again, with the timeframe, we're looking at not necessarily a 30- or 50-year building. Based on the IUP, it would be a 20-year building. Staff's comfortable with, with that deviation. This is the landscape plan. I'll just address a couple items here. As I said, this is the existing office portion. Office staff and visitors will have access to two parking lots right here. This entrance is not gated. The other two on 126th do have security gates that will prevent visitors or whomever from straying into the yard. There's also access points on the north side of the facility, off of Lady Bird Lane. This provides for additional parking, whether it be visitors or shop staff able to access that part. As we, as I indicated, vehicles would enter from the south side and be able to leave the new addition on the north side. Again, one fluid motion, and then be able to get out and access Lady Bird Lane. Again, that's a benefit that NUS sees to the project. Staff has looked at the curb cuts and the traffic, has no concerns with that. Commissioners, staff feels the proposed landscaping, as well as the stormwater management proposed, is also a great benefit. As I indicated, there's not a whole lot of curb appeal to the existing facility, and the applicant has done a nice job of adding landscaping, cleaning up the site, trying to delineate what's gravel and what long-term will be green space. I indicated in the condition, staff is recommending some additional low-lying shrubs in this area. Again, just to soften up the break between the street and where the large pieces of equipment will be stored, or excuse me, displayed. This area is intended for outdoor storage. The applicant's done a great job of screening that with some landscaping. Staff, in one of the conditions, is recommending that some of those trees, or all of those trees, be converted to coniferous. That would provide a thick year-round screen rather than deciduous trees. And again, from the intersection with Dupont and Lady Bird, it provides a great curb appeal. It really dresses up this end of, of the site with the landscaping. The applicant is proposing six-foot chain link with barbed wire across it. And I'll just run through the, the line for the security fence. It connects with the building here, runs out to the street along 126th, running north along the property line to the north property line adjacent with YRC, runs back, up, and connects back to the building. Again, the use of barbed wire in, in this industrial district is not out of place. Many of the other land uses have that. Staff is recommending a slight modification that this section be a black vinyl-coated chain link. Certainly, the barbed wire won't be vinyl-coated, but that gives it just a little bit more curb appeal from that intersection, and staff sees that as a, as a benefit to the project. Just wanted to make sure I covered all of these. The applicant did provide a color elevation to get, give us an idea what the addition will look like. Again, it is industrial in nature, but it is, it would be a nice expansion to the facility and improvement to the site. There are a number of conditions. I'll get to those in a second. Really, they get to the termination of the IUP at that 20-year date, the obligations between the city and NUS Trucking with that. Staff certainly sees the benefit of this. It's a, an opportunity for the existing business to grow and expand, continued use of the property for the immediate future. Staff does see the long-term need to have a, or the need to have a date specific at the end of that term so we can move forward with long-term visions for the MRQ. I know the applicant will speak to the timeframe and may have other information. Commissioners, these are, in total, there are nine conditions. What's in front of you is the same that was indicated in the packet. Commissioner Thomas, I did want to bring up, we had talked with engineering about separate condition or whatever needed on the maintenance for the pond. In talking with, with Ryan, it seems to be a minor item that we can handle with the development contract, so that is, is not a condition outlined. Mr. Chair, it is a public hearing. I'd like to indicate Greg Nus is here. I know I had a number of presenters listed in that report. Greg will field most of the questions and look to the rest of his team for anything else. And Commissioners, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, Mr. Slenia did a very detailed presentation with the information regarding this application. Questions, comments for Mr. Slenia? Mr. Commissioner Taheri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, regarding building materials and architecture, could you bring up the elevation of the project, the exterior elevations? As indicated, the, the office portion of the building, the exterior facade consists of painted gray masonry block. Could you elaborate what is it?
It's, it's very utilitarian. There isn't a lot of show to it, is it? It's existing masonry block. It has been painted in the past. Typically, we would not allow masonry to be painted. In this situation, it's actually a benefit because the applicant can, can order the metal panels with the skin on it. That will have somewhat of a stucco or ephist look to it, and then repaint the match, the rest of the building to match that. So in the end, it would not necessarily look like an addition, but something of the same color palette.
So the office portion is an existing, existing part of the building, correct?
Correct. If I can, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the existing office and the smaller shop are existing on-site today. Both of those are a painted masonry block. This, the, the white or the hashed-in area, that is the proposed shop addition.
And that portion, the skin package consists of? I'm a little confused.
Sure.
The skin is metal panels with masonry blocks?
It is, it is a metal panel construction, similar to the car dealerships that we see on Buck Hill Road or other auto dealerships right now. It's very popular. With the product they're going with, they have the ability, or anyone has the ability to pick the exterior skin or exterior finish. Rather than a glossy metal panel, which is normally what the dealerships go with, they're going with a textured exterior skin. The city has used a similar product for a utility building we have not too far from here. We wanted something that was not cost prohibitive. We didn't exactly know how long the building's going to be there, but we didn't want just a plain block building. So that gives us flexibility. Similarly, RDO had an expansion to their building, again, for a shop. Same product. It's a metal panel skeleton with a skin on it.
So are we intending to match the color of the metal panels to the painted masonry block? Are they compatible in different colors?
They, they don't necessarily need to be compatible. The applicant's proposing, once the, once the addition is complete or once they have chosen the specific color for that, they're, they have the ability to go back and paint the balance of the building.
And that has to come before you?
No.
For approval?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taheri. Yeah, any other Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Corey?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Slenia, in, in reading Mr. Nus's letter to us, it looks like they basically work very closely with Yellow Freight Trucking.
YRC.
YRC.
Yes.
And from my understanding of the way the situation is present right now, assuming YRC doesn't expand any buildings or anything, they, they can stay there virtually forever.
Correct.
Okay. But under this, what would happen is basically, NUS would have to go in 20 years.
That is correct. The, the IUP, and I want to make sure everybody understands this. The IUP is reflective of only Lot 1, Block 1, which is the, the NUS four acres. It would not be reflective or applied to the YRC parcel. So yes, it would be a situation where if the proposal moves ahead with that, with the conditions, YRC, or NUS would have a 20-year time limit. YRC would continue as a non-conformity indefinitely.
And, and I assume this is the case, but NUS basically with, with this acceptance, not only has to get rid of the new part of the building, they have to just go away.
Correct.
So the already present building would have to be?
Correct. The existing and the addition, correct.
And then the other issue? And then the other issue I would want to talk about is the agreement, I guess, or the conditions of the demolition, where the proposal is 90 days. There was some concern, and obviously, maybe we can speak on that a little bit later, but there was some concern about sort of that hard and fast timeline of 90 days of demolition. Was there any thought of making that more, considering YRC might still be there, was there a thought of making that a little bit more flexible type of thing?
That certainly, it wasn't discussed with the applicant. That was similar language we used with RDO. We're certainly open to that. We wouldn't necessarily want to drag it out for years, but I think that is, that's something we can accommodate if that's a concern of the applicant.
And then, along those same lines, you know, he was talking about, I believe the applicant was talking about a bond as opposed to just sort of handing over the property, buildings, whatever, that sort of thing. I assume that's something that could be discussed and...
We can discuss, and it would be something that would take a little more discussion with, obviously, the city attorney. Over the last few years, the city has eliminated the use of bonds. We prefer to go with a letter of credit. They're more easily accessible and essentially less paperwork and hoops to jump through. We are open to a number of different kinds of severity on that.
And then, lastly, if I may.
Go ahead.
There was, and maybe this is not an issue, and you might not be the person to ask, but one thing that was brought up in here is to tie this sort of in with YRC in the sense that if YRC is still there, whatever's going to be developed there is probably not going forward, would be my guess, considering that they're making up, what, 90, 95% of the area and space? Was there any discussion about that, of tying those two together in the sense that, I can certainly see if YRC leaves, that then Nuss, you know, should, in a fairly short period of time, be removed as well, something along those lines? Was there any discussion along that?
Absolutely. Staff spent quite a bit of time with this, going back and forth, discussing discussions with the applicant. From our standpoint, yes, it is likely that YRC will be there indefinitely. As you said, they are a significantly larger piece of the pie. They're immediately adjacent. It's reasonable to think that Nuss property will be worth more or could be encompassed into a larger development if YRC were to redevelop. From the city's standpoint, we, like the applicant and the planning commission, we're trying to figure out what's going to happen in 20 years from now. We're looking into our crystal ball. We feel it's pertinent with the benefits Nuss is receiving with the IUP and with the PUD to have a date specific. Right now, we're saying 20 years because that is, that's an approximate timeframe we have with the quarry, with the landfill, with RDO across the street. This in no way prohibits Nuss from coming back in 16 and a half years and saying, "Look, nothing's going on. Can we revisit the timing of this IUP?" But it does give the city a starting point. It gives the applicant an immediate benefit, and it gives the city a starting point with a date specific.
And that was going to be my follow-up question of an ability to, if stuff is still not happening, to come back and look at it or revisit it.
Certainly, again, we're dealing with a different planning commission, a different council at that time. That is an unknown, but our intent is, nowhere in the language would it say, you know, Nuss is prohibited from requesting an extension.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Bradford?
Thank you, Chair. I have just a few questions. Chris, you touched on it briefly, but can you help me get my head around the rest of the development? Do you have any idea? You mentioned the termination of operations of Waste Management and with Kramer. And I know we've gone through several extensions of IUPs, I think. Do those two properties operate under an IUP? I think they do.
I'm glad you brought that up. Commissioners, both the Kramer Quarry and Waste Management landfill operate under PUDs.
Okay.
So, there is not a sunset date, as there is with an interim use permit, as there is with RDO or Asselford or some of the existing IUPs. We do have agreements in place. We have executed contracts moving forward to a recreational land use when the landfill ceases operation, freshwater lake when the quarry ceases operation. Those unfortunately are moving targets also. When the landfill is full and they're at capacity, we have an end land use plan for them. We don't have a specific date for that. Similar to the quarry, when they are done mining, we have a specific end land use plan. There have been changes in the economy, changes in the way people recycle, changes in how much construction is going on, and all of those are affecting both the landfill and the quarry. 20 years ago, we thought we would be at that point right now, and now we're seeing in 20 years out, and simply stated, that's why we're using 20 years with Nuss.
So, essentially, with the PUD, Kramer could cease operation and sit on the property, and really, nothing could happen if they chose to. There's no sunset to redevelopment at all?
There is no sunset for the operation. There are PUD agreements in place and plans in place for a future land use. I believe, this gets technical, and I'd have the city attorney respond to some of these, but we do have agreements in place for development when the quarry is completed.
Because I know that's been extended a couple times with the city council recently, I mean, in the last five years.
Yep. It went through a significant renegotiation, and I believe it's still, it may still be ongoing as to how deep they can mine out the quarry and what is the lowest level they can reach. We've somewhat established the east and west boundaries, but they also have a depth to deal with in how much material they can get out of there.
What about the asphalt plant next to Kramer?
That is part of the agreements. I don't know the date there. That has been looked at as well, I believe. I believe there's an IUP in place for that.
And then the rest of the surrounding properties, JB O'Meara, existing building, could operate in perpetuity.
Indefinitely.
Because it's a building.
Correct.
There's a concrete plant down there. The city does have a new little building. I think we built a couple years ago to assist in the water treatment plant.
Correct.
And then, really, across the street from that, then you move from the district that does not allow exterior storages to a district that does, correct? If I understand that boundary?
Correct. If you, I'll just jump back to this. This is 126th Street. Everything to the south of here is B4. It is more commercial. This is where Park Jeep sits right here. Right now, they have no plans of leaving. They've talked about expanding their facility, and through the conditional use permit, they can do that.
Chris, you talked about, and we always weigh benefits, and there's a pretty substantial benefit with the land being deeded to the city to extend the roadway, and then benefits to the applicant from the standpoint of just being able to continue to operate? Or can we, when you talk about their benefits on the offset of us telling them to leave?
Certainly. Commissioners, that's a good point. Right now, as with RDO, or excuse me, YRC, Nuss Trucking can continue there indefinitely, but they are essentially limited to the building area they have. They're limited to the facility they have. Their immediate benefit is the addition. It doubles the size of their facility, and it provides greater space and yard for their growth.
One last question.
Go ahead.
Can you, let's go back to something we talked about earlier. When you talk about the process to extend the interim use permit.
Mm-hmm.
Can you quickly walk through for us, let's say that Nuss is 15 years into this agreement, and essentially, nothing has happened, or everything is still in place as we see it today with our crystal ball? Can you quickly walk us through the process the applicant will have to go through at that point to extend that interim use permit that's in place?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair Commissioners, it is a public hearing. It is something that would be reviewed by the planning commission and the city council. It's a document that's recorded with Dakota County once it's executed, so it's part of the public record if anybody were to do a search on that. It is similar to what we've worked with Nuss for this evening. It's about a 60 to 90-day process to go through that. Staff review, presentation of the planning commission, and that action by the council. Similarly, the planning commission not that long ago saw an extension request for Burnsville Motors. In that situation, again, they were obligated by their approvals to perform on something or do something. They requested additional time to do that. We've also recently dealt with Innovative Landscapes, or maybe not that recently. A few years ago, Innovative Landscapes had outdoor storage. They had some soil stockpiled. They had requested additional time to remove that and remediate. So, it's not uncommon. We do deal with these, especially in the MRQ area from time to time.
So, for a financial impact, is there substantial fee associated with that?
There's a $750 filing fee and then an escrow deposit required to cover staff time and attorney time as we look at it.
Okay. Chair, that's all I have at this time until...
Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. Any other Commissioners? Okay. Would you like us to bring up the applicant? I have questions.
Yeah.
Chris, would allow the applicant to please come on up and mention your name and address for the records, please?
Hi, my name is Greg Nuss. I live at 9100 Joliet Avenue North in Stillwater, Minnesota. That's my home address. Thank you for the opportunity, Commission Chair and Commissioners and city staff, to address you this evening. So, first and foremost, let me begin by stating I understand the city's desire to proceed towards its continuing goals of redevelopment. And further, it is my intent to come up with a mutual agreement that creates what I would call a win-win between the city and my company. The roots of my business date back to 1959. My grandfather, Charlie Nuss, ran a small service facility. Fast forward to 2014, Mack Trucks, which is one of our main manufacturers, is 114-years-old American company. Nuss has been taking care of customers for 55 years now. Our Burnsville location is a key strategic point, being in the southern metropolitan area and closer to some of our largest customers. Ames Construction, very close to us. We work very close with them. Obviously, as we've talked about, Yellow Freight, YRC. We generally conduct multiple transactions daily with both of those two, Ames and Yellow. We've got another very large facility up in Roseville, Minnesota on 35W, about 10 acres right along the freeway. That's where my office is. So, the IUP, new development, what does all this mean? It's an opportunity to create a preeminent, small-scale industrial project that will create additional jobs, higher tax base for the city, and to continue to promote business within the city of Burnsville. I know that Burnsville communicates itself as a business-friendly city, which leads me to hopefully work out some kind of a win-win scenario, you know, probably specific in the timeline. What is a win-win, in my opinion? First of all, I think it needs to make common sense. It needs to provide both parties with a fair exit strategy. Third, it needs to protect investments for both parties, both city and Nuss. Fourth, it needs to promote good stewardship of the land, well in harmony with the area that it surrounds. My proposal is to somewhat counter the staff recommendations that's framed as such. My thoughts were to offer a 15-year use, not 20, but a 15-year, with an understood extension tied exclusively to the redevelopment of the large YRC industrial site. YRC is not only adjoining property, but a large customer of Nuss, and we've talked about that. I guess, similar to a coffee shop on the perimeter of a large shopping mall, Nuss and YRC are similar uses. A coffee shop wouldn't fit well next to the YRC site, just as the Nuss site wouldn't fit well next to a shopping mall. So, if, in my proposal, if YRC were to redevelop prior to 15 years, then Nuss's removal would be set at the 15-year mark, and I'm fine with that. If YRC redevelopment happens after 15 years, then Nuss would follow that redevelopment timeline. Again, nobody's got a crystal ball. I'm looking at investing, you know, a few million dollars, and I just want to try to protect that and also protect the relationship that I have with YRC in particular and also Ames. So, the only thing I would ask is that, you know, to provide some kind of a short transition time of, say, 24 months or something for me to relocate my business in either case, in either prior to 15 or post-15. I guess other carefully thought-out factors include the fact that many of my competitors are currently located either across DuPont from Nuss or 126th, and these include Asselford, Vermeer, RDO, and Fleet Pride. Neither Asselford or Fleet Pride, to my knowledge, have inquired about any expansion. I do acknowledge that RDO has recently agreed to a 20-year IUP. However, I want to note that they also own the Vermeer facility that's in the B4 district, so they have a fallback position in the area. If in 20 years, they ask for an extension, maybe it's approved, maybe it's not approved, depending on the area of what's going on in the redevelopment, but they do own the Vermeer facility that, as I understand, can remain intact, you know, indefinitely, I guess. But regardless of that, you know, it's the IUP of what, of Nuss and what we're talking about here. So, you guys talked about the 90-day demolition schedule. I'm certainly willing to come up with some kind of options, either through a bond or letter of credit possibly. I struggle a bit with the language of just saying 90 days, and if all of a sudden I can't demolish the building within 91 days, potentially turn over my land investment to the city. So, that's a struggle for me, but I'm certainly willing to work with city staff to come up with some kind of mutually acceptable agreement. So, you know, I guess that's about it. Chris covered everything well, that we would be adding on a 12,000-square-foot Chris covered everything well, that we would be adding on a 12,000 square foot service area. We would move more vehicles indoors, creating less outdoor storage, bring the entire facility up to current, city's current landscaping standards, and ideally create a harmonized business property that both the city of Burnsville and NUS can be proud of. So that's kind of my discussion points. Commissioners, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Nuss. I do have some questions of you, but I'll give Commissioners a chance to go first. If you would like to ask Mr. Nuss any questions regarding his application. Commissioner Bradrick?
Thank you. Mr. Nuss, thank you for your time. We appreciate you coming to see us this evening. Sometimes it helps us to kind of tick away when we've got this amount of issues, what we have to decide on the terminology, I'm missing the PUD or the IUP conditions. So with nine of them, we've discussed so far kind of conditions with the interim use permit, which is number two, and the applicant raising the building and number three, and number four securing the compliance with the termination. With those three still in discussion, do you have any other issues with the condition number one, five, six, seven, eight, or nine that was listed? Okay, just trying to get our hands around what you feel comfortable with. That's one of the questions I always try to ask, is where are you at with a comfort level from a standpoint of current conditions? So I have then just a couple more quick questions.
You're on the floor, go ahead.
When you talk a little bit about redevelopment of the YRC, I certainly respect your comment about Yellow Freight, because I'm assuming if I remember right, I see most of their trucks are Volvo and that's a big piece of your business.
Correct, that's right.
And Ames has Mack, I think, if I know their trucks. So that would be the two big pieces for your service department. So if YRC were to close, you would, the need for the facility from a functional standpoint would be greatly diminished because of the sheer number of trucks. Ames, with their proximity with that, would not dictate the need of the facility to go forward?
Yeah, well, we'd need to find a, we'd need to relocate.
Okay.
So we would locate in the southern metropolitan area, more than likely. We've looked at some different sites, but we feel that with our customers again today, it makes more sense to try to go through this process to potentially add on.
Okay.
And then, yeah, if Yellow redeveloped, that we would just, yeah, maybe we'd find a site next to them, but that's probably unlikely right now. But we would certainly look for something similar in a similar area, you know, if that answers your question.
Okay. The, I'm a little fuzzy on, when you talk about redevelopment, I guess I'd like to clarify a couple of things there, because there's probably many a stages. There's ceasing of operations with Yellow Freight and the property sets empty. There is, the property is sold, so YRC sells the property and they still operate. To the other end of the continuum, that ceasing operation sells the property and then the property is finally redeveloped. And then so I wanted, I want to try to clarify that process. What are your thoughts on where we, if we were going to land with that? That seems a little ambiguous to me and I'd kind of like to know your thoughts.
Very fair point. So Yellow, Yellow's history, a longtime freight company in the US, they actually merged with roadway, another one, and became YRC. So I think that there's a chance that in the future, the facility maybe gets renamed, it's a Fortune 500 company, so we don't know, you know, there could be another buyout or something. I guess in my view, as long as it operates as a trucking terminal facility, I would see that as my connection if... I think originally my thought was that redevelopment would be when, you know, the shovel goes into the ground and the building gets torn down for a different use other than a trucking terminal. So that's kind of my thought. Your question on if for some reason it sat vacant, I don't know, I guess I might be open to something like that, I guess. But I guess my main intent would be that when it quit, when it just changed redevelopment, meaning that it went from a trucking company to some other kind of, some other kind of use. I guess, I don't know if that kind of explains it.
Maybe back to if Yellow Freight ceases to, if the building ceases to be a trucking terminal.
Yep, correct. That would be a fair point.
Okay.
And I would agree, that one that I would agree with.
That's all I have right now, Chair. I'm sure I'll have future questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. I have a couple of points that need probably a little clarification on. First of all, I just want to talk about the 90 days for you to raise the billings down. I think that's a language that is, you know, they use all the time with staff. I know I've been in this commission for so many years, I know staff, they just put the 90 days there, but they work with the applicant and... Right, Mr. Slenian?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we don't, at a staff level, we can work with the applicant on demolition. We don't see that being a concern.
Okay. Now that they've taken care of that, I'm interested in the document you gave us before the meeting. You stated that you have a proposal of a reduced IUP 15-year.
Correct.
Okay, if, I'm very much interested in this. If you go, if this is passed by the city council, the 15-year, and YRC at the end of 15-year is still there and going strong, what happens to you? You continue?
Correct.
Okay. But, Mrs. Slenian, in that case, if that's the case, then they will have to come back to the commission for an extension?
Not necessarily. Commissioner, Mr., Commissioners, depending on how the language is fabricated with the city council, I believe with the applicant's first choice, it would, if YRC continues after 15 years, they're not necessarily coming back to the planning commissioner, city council, they are then bound to the date at which, which Mr. Bradrick just covered, the date at which YRC is no longer a trucking terminal. And that would be, that would be an ongoing item, wouldn't necessarily require the planning commissioner, council action.
I need to just to say to you, it's very enlightening, the cooperation you have with your neighbors, the businesses. You don't see that. There sometimes it's all competition, but you have, your neighbors are your customers and that's very neat and it's very nice to see that businesses in Burnsville operate like that. And yes, the city is proud of Burnsville being a business-friendly city. I can assure you that. The city is proud of that. Okay. I'm done, any other questions? Okay, thank, Mr. Banky? Commissioner Banky?
I guess, Mr. Nuss, what was the rationale behind reducing the 20 to a 15?
Well, I guess I'm trying to create kind of, I mean, again, I go back to my original point that I want to try, I understand the city's intent of redeveloping the area. I mean, we're all, I guess we're all stewards of the land we use and, so I don't, I'm not trying to disagree with that point at all. And I guess for me, reducing it was a way to try to show some cooperation that, you know, I'm willing to take a reduced IUP if YRC was to redevelopment because we are so close with them and we do a lot, you know, we do a lot of business with them. And so it's, it's just as a way to offer up some kind of win-win scenario. I give some, then the city offers to say, okay, as long as YRC continues to operate, NUS is on that same timeline and if Yellow redevelops in 10 years, then NUS leaves in 15, I guess. And the clarification point about when YRC ceases as a trucking terminal, that facility, I'm okay with redevelop, that would be the timeline that we would move on. And then the only thing I would ask for is that, like a 24-month, I need to relocate my business time. So just trying to find a win-win, some kind of a compromise, I guess. And I guess being in business, I mean, I understand that, you know, at the end of the day, it needs to work for both parties.
Right.
And so...
Without getting too much into business, how would you characterize the amount of business you get from YRC? I mean, is it significant? Is it more than half?
You know, I've got my general manager here, Mike. Mike, what do you think we do in...
Our business is, our business is pretty, oh, sorry. Our business is, we have seven stores in two states and so our business is pretty big. A portion of it that's based out of Burnsville, it's probably, I don't know, 5% of our total business in Burnsville.
Is YRC?
Yep. Well, if you factor in Ames, it's probably between 5 and 10. The two are pretty significant parts of our business.
I meant just for that facility.
Yeah, so it's probably between, more than 5, maybe less than 10 between the two.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so maybe I can, if I can reduce what you're saying down to, so that I'm sure I'm tracking with you is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, basically what you're saying is that you're not against the eventual redevelopment of the land, but you want to be around until the redevelopment actually happens.
That is correct.
And so if it, if YRC is still going strong and there's no redevelopment, then you don't feel there's probably a need to leave?
That is correct.
Does that be kind of a fair summary?
That would be a very fair statement, yeah.
I think he, his company, I think what I'm hearing is that his company should be there, but contingent on YRC. If YRC moves, is sold, then he's saying 15 years. If they're sold in 10 years, he has five years more to be there and then he will go. But he needs, he needs that 90 days to be flexible.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nuss. Please have a seat and stand by, we may need you back.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, wait, sorry, there's one more. Commissioner Banky has.
I guess my only last question is, do you have any real issue against the idea that this is a, that this should be a renewable IUP to carry you to whenever YRC redevelops?
Do I have an issue with that?
It feels like there's no acknowledgement that it could be renewed to carry you to the point where...
Oh, that I could apply for a renewal?
Sure.
Well, I guess it's, you know, for me, it's a multimillion-dollar investment and I would rather have something set in stone that's tied to my customer and the big, you know, I guess the big shopping mall right next to me, than to come through and on a maybe, I guess. And I'm just looking at it from an investment standpoint, that it protects my investment because presumably that if YRC is redeveloped, I would assume that property values will come up and that that would be a good time for me to sell and move. So I guess I'm taking a bit of a hedge bet, but I believe that that's a fair, a fair bet from an investment standpoint that I'm willing to make.
True. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banky. Thanks.
Thanks.
Please stand by, we may need you later on. Commissioners, this is, this application requires a public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open. Anyone from the audience who would like to come up and address the commission on this application, just feel free to do so now. Going once, going twice. Since seeing no one coming up, Commissioners, I close the public hearing and now discussion on the application. Commissioner, did you hear it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, another question for Chris.
Go ahead.
Going back to the project, the building, I am a little concerned about the proposed gravel parking area to the east of the building, it's about 4,000 square feet. Could you describe what's the function of this area is?
Certainly, Commissioners, would you like me to do it? I can take a crack at it and then, Nuss, Greg, if I misspeak.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Commissioners, let me clarify the area to the west, the larger area to the west of the building, or directly south?
South to the east of the building.
The larger, the southwest.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Certainly. That is, as best as I can understand, it's somewhat of a staging area as well as a storage area. Vehicles are coming in for repair, coming in for lease renewal, coming in for any number of things. Some of these vehicles may not fit in the building and that is a storage area for them. Some of these vehicles are also track equipment, so the applicant would be trying to keep them off of the bituminous. In a scenario we discussed with the applicant, oversized load, a flatbed trailer would come in, they would use the westerly access, the gated access, come in with a truck and trailer coming into that gravel area, drop the excavator or whatever it may be, and then the truck and trailer would leave to the north and leave via Lady Bird. That excavate, that excavator will be there for a few days during repair or parts or any, anything like that. It also gives the applicant the ability to move things around. They are asking for display along 126th Street. Again, some of that would be track equipment, so they're moving that around. I can't say what percentage, but I'm sure there are pieces of equipment that don't fit in their building and would need to be onsite secure but can't be inside.
My concern is that if the gravel is subject to exposed soil, in case there are some repairs going on and the leakage, oil leak and spells and so forth could contaminate the soil for future projects or potential future problem. The city have any mechanism in place to watch over that issue?
We do not. Commissioners, that is a, it's an issue we're dealing with citywide based on the number of outdoor uses we have. I know Dakota County tracks contaminated parcels and we deal with them as they come up, but this would not be, unfortunately, we don't have the staff or the manpower to actively track or pursue something like that.
Mr. Chair, do we all have design for a lot that would have a liner under it or something that would keep that from becoming a problem?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been discussed with the applicant. We can certainly pursue that. Ryan, I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Chris, I'm sorry, just to add, if we don't have a system in place to somewhat, you know, protect this, we're talking about future developments, the new development coming in place, do the soil test and soil, the environmental test, and we realize it costs quite a bit of money to fix this problem. So it'll be a huge burden on a new development coming into place. And at that place, it could be, I mean, at that time, it could run into problems, in my opinion. So maybe I could ask the applicant if they can think of ways to protect the soil in case of heavy repair or possible heavy leakage and the smell.
Whoever's going to answer the question, please come on up.
Okay. So to start with, by law, I mean, because we're an industrial company, we're very familiar... So, to start with, by law, I mean, because we're an industrial company, we're very familiar with all of the laws regarding oil spills or leaks and things like that. So, we have onsite at all, all of our locations, spill kits, things like that, that if we, if something comes in, has got an oil leak, that we don't recognize right away, we're gonna, we're gonna, we have a way to contain it. Anything that, that's a spill, and I can't tell you exactly what the number is, but any significant spill, we're required by law to report to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and we do that. If we were to, because they've got a really friendly program, I think if, you know, to just report it, right, because like I said, that's the, that's the law. We, we just work with this stuff every day, so we just don't allow that. We've got ways to, we've got pans, like a metal pan, that if something came in on a trailer that had a big leak, we would contain it with some kind of a drip pan, or we would bring it right in the shop right away. The thing with the gravel, particularly its tracked vehicles, so you've got an excavator that might weigh 120,000 pounds, is if you were to run that on a bituminous surface, it would be destroyed. And so we do use gravel, we use it in all of our sites, and also all of our competitors around the sites today. So RDO, for example, Vermeer, I mean, everybody uses the, you know, the gravel, so, but it's a very fair concern. You know, liability-wise, as the property owner, we've got to make sure that if, once we pass the site on, it usually has to pass a Phase 1, and then in an industrial site, they'd probably do a Phase 2, which would mean drilling and testing of the soil, and that if there was anything that came up, that as the seller, we would be liable to clean that up.
So, base, correct me if I'm wrong, from my understanding, that at, at the point that you decide to move on or evacuate the, the area or close the shop, so-called, are you responsible to, to turn the, the area back to the city in accordance with passing Phase 1 and 2 both?
Well, as a seller of the property, I would, any buyer would more than likely insist upon a Phase 1, Phase 2, very common in commercial real estate, that they would, first, they would go through a Phase 1, which is where they look at all the, all the contaminations of not only anything on your site, but any of your neighbors and surrounding, and then based on that, a lender or a buyer may recommend, well, I'm going to do some, some testing where they drill and, and check everything. But yeah, so as, as the seller, I'm liable for that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner T. Harry. Commissioners, I think what's before us, it's a little complicated, but we've heard from Mr. Slenya, we have heard from Mr. Ness, and it's up to the commissioners now to, if you have any other questions or, or you need the applicant up again, or you need to ask Mr. Slenya. I want to make sure we have the opportunity to deal with it and, you know, be everybody's clear as to what the situation is. Any other? Commissioner Bradrick?
I, I'd like to, conceptually, I'm in support of this application with kind of what I would consider to be the ideas that we have floated in front of us. I see a lot of challenges as the, as the city moves forward in this, in this redevelopment. A couple of things. The, the addition of the building, nice addition, it's going to be essentially, according to Chris, the same structure that RDO has put on their building, but there's no, there's not, looks to me to be very, very little investment put in the existing part of the building, and as a business owner, I understand that, they're going to ask them to tear it down. So that, that gets the city in the quandary of, what do we do? Because I do believe RDO did an excellent job in theirs from the standpoint of the way the building looks today. They, they took the existing building, the parapet walls came off, they tied the steel together, and when you drive by that building going forward, it's a, it's a very nice, it's a very, very impressive. They substantially brought that building from the, essentially the 70s, into what would be considered to be up-to-date. And in this particular development, that's not the case, we're just adding on to the building, but very functionally to get the, to get the applicant with what they need. As a city, we've got to figure out how we're going to go forward with some of these, because the closer and closer and closer we get to 2035 date, in my opinion, things will come to a screeching halt, because if we, another, if 10 years out, no one's going to do anything if the building has to be torn down in, in 10 years. So I think there's, how do we not let the, the area continue to deteriorate in some cases, and how do we facilitate a happy medium? And that's where I've, as I've read all this, I see the, the issues. So, I could be in support of this. I think if we kind of went through and, and came to some agreements, I think we've touched on, probably a raising of the building could be, to be determined between now and when the staff takes this to City Council. Chris, is that a?
Yes.
Or would you like that to be?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I, I don't know that we can, I don't know that staff is comfortable going out 24 months, but I believe if, if the balance of the, the conditions are agreeable to the applicant, I, I guess off the cuff, I would say 12 months to, to vacate and demo the site. I'm hesitant to go much farther than that, because on the surface, we are trying to be consistent with what agreements we have with RDO.
I think that's a good compromise. With 12 months, would you be comfortable with that? I mean, again, it is, they're flexible. If you have 12 months and you can get it done, you know, 12 months and one week, nobody going to get on your case for that.
Yeah. So I, the biggest issue for me is that I need to go find a piece of property, either build it or something, and that's where I'm asking for the 24 months. Again, I want to note on the, on the RDO facility, they own Vermeer, and so they have a local facility right there that they could, they could fall back on if they needed to relocate. It's just, for me, I've got to go, you know, find a piece of property, build, whatever the case may be. So I, if I could get, if I could, if I could move off sooner, I'd be happy to do that. But I think 12 months would be, I, I think the biggest thing, it kind of goes back to the, some kind of a, the IUP, the, the term extension is probably the biggest item, so.
Okay. Commissioner Corey?
Thank you, Chair. I think we actually have two separate issues going on here that are being melded.
Yeah.
To me, there's the, there's the demo issue, which is, we're talking about 90 days, but probably, you know, flexibility of something between 90 days and 180 days is plenty, and then you're talking about the relo, complete relocation time period of which you're talking about 24 months.
Correct.
So, I think there's separate issues.
That's a fair, I, I, when I said the, the 24 months, I included those together as a relocate and, and.
You weren't just speaking of demo, Ian.
I wasn't just speaking of demo. That's, that's correct, and that, that's a fair point.
That's, that's, that's actually kind of where I was trying to get to type. So, if we were to come up with, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but let's go back to some discussions we've had, if, if we were to land on, and I, I think we have to stay away from the name YRC, because YRC, to your point, could be bought out, and it could be Fred's Trucking. Once the facility ceases to operate as a transportation terminal or something, you would then have three, two years or three years to.
Relocate.
Move, to tear, to relocate and tear the building down.
Correct, correct. And my proposal was, was 24 months.
Because, because I understand your need to find a property, hopefully that would be in Burnsville, run that through the Planning Commission, try to make some additions to the building, I, I, I understand that as, as a, as an issue. So, I would be agreeable to a timeframe that's tied to when the, when the, the terminal ceases, and we might need Chris to give us some guidance, but the property ceases to operate in its current capacity, and then there is a timeframe from that point out for you to cease operation and terminate the building, and what, if that's a two-year period or a three-year period, to give you that, that flexibility.
Yep.
Okay, I think, I think we have clarified that, because you were, you were thinking, I mean, commissioners were thinking that the raising of the, of the buildings, three months, and what you're talking about, the relo, raising of the buildings and relocation, 24 months.
Correct.
And are you comfortable with 24 months?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I, I just want, one comment on the, oh, on just the looks of the facility. We're more than happy to, to paint and make the current site, or, sorry, the current building look as nice as the new one. I mean, as far as painting it, any trim work, any doors, anything that needs to be upgraded, we would, we would do that. We certainly don't want to have a, a great-looking addition and then have something that looks like it came out of the 70s next to it. That's not, that's not what we.
That's one of my concerns as well, too.
Not what we want to represent to our customers. So we would be happy to work with city staff to come up with an agreement as far as painting or any, anything else that, within reason, to, to clean it up, make sure it looks good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ness. Commissioners, I am interested in the 15-year IUP, throw in the 24 months for raising of the buildings and relocation.
Now, this, excuse me, so 24 months is, is up to 24 months. It could be less.
Yes.
It could be a year or even less. So that is the worst scenario as far as the timeline.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you find someplace to relocate, I don't think you want to hang, hang on to this, you know, it doesn't make sense.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I did my exercise. Yes, that is correct. So if I were to find a facility, I'd want to get moved on and, and, so I would say up to 24 months, and that, in that timeframe would also include the demolition, so, you know, we would plan that as part of a, of an overall move and demolition of, of the land as it sits.
Thank you.
But he's asked, he's asking for the 15-year IUP or when the freight facility redevelops?
Well, 15-year IUP, and after the 15-year contingent on the.
Correct.
Yeah.
Versus the 20-year IUP, as Jeff recommends.
Do I hear a motion?
I actually wanted to make a comment, I guess.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm really struggling with the idea that we're disconnecting this IUP from the direction of the comp plan and the, and the standards for the gateway, and I am having a hard time supporting tying it to the YRC or the freight closing, since the IUP can be renewed, should we get to that point. Thank you.
I hear, I hear. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very interesting conversation, and I'm agreeable with pretty much everything that's been said, except I'm kind of losing sight of, of the Northwest area, whatever we're calling this area, but, and I appreciate the compromise, trying to get to a win-win situation, but RDO has kind of set a standard, and how do we bring that into this conversation in these conditions? And, and to Mr. Bradrick's point, somewhere down the line, we're going to get in this gray area where the windows get smaller and smaller, and what are we going to have there? One thought that I had, you know, I, I like the 20-year IUP. I like the, I like the idea of an automatic extension, you know, dependent upon the adjacent use, but what about a sunset clause? I mean, so what if we go back to 20 years? Did automatic extensions, as long as we had an adjacent truck terminal, but put a sunset clause on there, say 30 years? You have the opportunity to make an extension, but that's a thought that I had.
Interesting. Commissioner Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and I'm trying to get, struggle around this too, in the sense that, you know, the, the MRQ has sort of this projection timeline of 20 years, but what, what seems, what is the, the deciding factor for me is that as long as, as YRC is, is there, or it's something else as a freight terminal, the MRQ isn't going to be the MRQ. I mean, that, that to me is, is the hangup, and, and if, if YRC goes away, obviously then the whole redevelopment motif is going to go forward and is going to happen, but as long as 58 acres or whatever it is roughly is there, it's not happening. And so I'm struggling with forcing this gentleman to then go away, sort of just because, obviously he can come back and, and do a, a request for renewal, but as he says, it's easy for us to sit here when, you know, and say, well, you just come back here again and pay your $150 bucks and show up and make your little pitch and poof, and we're all okay. Well, that's easy for us to say, but we're not investing our hard-earned money into a building. And, and to me, that's sort of where the rubber meets the road, I think, is that this gentleman wants to know what's going to happen down the road as best he can, and, and I think when I was trying to ask him questions is if, you know, if YRC goes away as a freight facility, then basically his reason for existing there goes away as well. And at that point, then the city can move forward, but until that piece of land is gone, they're not moving forward. And so I, I, I understand the global future plan and, and forward-looking of the city, and, and I agree with that, but until that goes away, it's not happening. And so I, I don't see the downfall of tying it to that piece of property. If that goes away, Ness, in its, in its existence now goes away. And I guess that's kind of my thought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Well, what's the call of the commissioners?
Point here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I hear concerns here from commissioners and also the owners, the property owners. I guess we're all looking for a happy medium here, a perfect solution, which we all know it doesn't exist, and it will not happen. So, we'll take the best scenario, in my opinion, and hope for the best.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner T. Harry. That's why the applicant is proposing a 15-year IUP. That's where I'm getting it from. And if he's comfortable with that, he has the 24 months within which to raise and relocate if that has to happen, but hi, his portion of the property is so small that even if he leaves tomorrow, there's no, no development can happen, because it's just a small piece. The YRC is the one that has the bigger plot of land there, and without them deciding to move or sell or something, nothing is going to happen in his property.
That's, that's my point.
Okay, well, if someone is.
Chair, could we clarify a couple things here, just with Chris?
Sure.
So, if we go down this road and then we vote up or down, let's, I'd like to go back and make sure we understand. For, Chris, can you help me for a second?
Absolutely.
So, for point, point number two with the interim use permit so far, and help me if I misstate something incorrectly, we would be looking to change the termination date as stated from January 1st, 2035, to match what we consider to be the applicant's proposal of a 15-year.
2030.
With a contingent, how would we, how do you want that worded, with a contingents on the, the?
YRC.
Once again, I think we should stay away from YRC, but the, the, the change of operation or the.
Use of however you describe that as a freight, trucking.
Once the freight terminal ceases to operate, as the, so, the date and/or termination of operation of a freight terminal.
That would be January 1. Are you talking about the 15-year?
Yeah, the date, plus, I was trying to word, I was trying to word the change of operation.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say the, the cease, the cease of operation.
Cease of operation.
Of the adjacent property as a truck terminal.
At 12400 Dupont.
Yeah, 12.
Use the lot block.
Correct. We, Ryan had a good point. We can use the legal description.
Makes sense.
It's lot 2 block 1.
Is, is that facility permitted through any other, as a truck facility currently?
It, it exists under a number of conditional use permits.
Okay. And those would. And those would or would not be, did they go with the property if somebody buys them?
Yes, they would. So, it would, um, it, it would require a cease, cease of use of the facility of the site for six months or greater.
And what else CUPs would?
Would be null and void or, uh, complete redevelopment of the, the site.
So, there's your, there's your triggers. With the CUP, it goes away, then there's no use, they can't reuse it without coming back to get a new CUP.
Right.
Yep.
I, I also think it's important to note in there, um, based on what the applicant proposed, it would be, um, whichever of those two timeframes is greater.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to have the greater language also. It doesn't make any sense.
And then, um, for point number three, the applicant shall raise all buildings on the subject site by the above date plus twenty-four months?
Correct. Uh, from, yeah, obviously this is, this is-
We would just restate the termination language in point number two of January first, 2030, or the cease of operation of a truck terminal, lot two, block one.
Correct.
And that's how we would handle number three, correct? And then number four, um, just a couple of things here, I want to make sure we understand this. The, there's some information here about soil borings, so we probably need to leave that in place.
Correct.
And so, but down, later on down here, you, uh, the city reserves right to accept or reject any said agreement based on findings of the soil borings. In lieu of an agreement, now does that mean the above agreement, a letter, a, a letter of credit, which the, the applicant had discussed, or cash security may be provided in the city? So, that, that piece, the last sentence, really, it takes place with the security of-
That gives us the flexibility, uh, it gives the applicant and the city's flexibility to work out a, uh, financial security rather than-
And so with a letter of credit, we're essentially saying if you don't tear the building down, we're, we're going to come up with a number, hundred thousand dollars. The city would come up with an agreeable number that's going to be placed in the line of credit. If the building is not terminated, the city will use that cash to remove the building. The property owner still owns the property.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
That will have to be, uh, make a change before it goes to the city council.
Commissioners, I just want to bring this up while we're discussing it and, and for the applicant too. Um, the reason, the reason the, um, the real property came into play was specifically because, um, uh, we sur-, uh, the city would want to cover all of our costs on the demolition. So, we would want a fairly large letter of credit. That could be held based on what the applicant's proposing for fifteen years or an undetermined amount of time. That is a big financial obligation for the applicant.
Absolutely.
We're certainly open to it, but that is, that's why the, the, uh, the real property came into play, where it certainly, it puts a lot of onus on the applicant, but, um, uh, there's no reason to believe they, they want to perform on the agreement. I don't think anybody wants a letter of credit sitting around for twenty years.
That's what I was trying to clarify that. So, it could be, it still could be either or.
As far as the city's-
That would be something you could work out with the applicant. If they're agreeable to the twenty-four month move and termination date, tear down, then we might be good.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify some points and make sure we're all on the, on the same, on the same board there, so, um, that's all I have, Chair.
All right. Any other changes, comments? If not, can I, uh, welcome a, a motion to resolve this matter?
Sure, uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Corey.
Let's see. Uh, the planning commission, uh, would recommend to the city council approval of the application by Nusco Leasing Six LLC and YRC for a preliminary and final plat to be known as YRC dash N-U-S-S Edition and the application by Nusco Leasing Six LLC for a planned unit development amendment to allow an interim use permit for outdoor storage and display at the one-two-five-four-zero Dupont Avenue with the following conditions as we have discussed and changed, I guess. I don't think I can say them all and get them correct.
Is that okay, Chris?
Yes.
Chris will make the changes. Motion moved by Commissioner Corey?
I would second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, motion move, uh, pass and a five, zero vote. First of all, thank you, uh, Mr. Nuss and your team for coming and for helping us to come to a, a recommendation that hopefully will work out for you and for the city. Uh, this matter will go to the city council at their meeting next Tuesday, November eighteen. Good luck and thank you again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a work plan item, LED light band discussion. Mr. Slinian.
This issue doesn't go away, does it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, this is a follow-up from our last meeting. We get to the right information here. Uh, we did cover this at the October twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, some of the items the planning commission had requested or further information on, um, what does the current city code and the zoning ordinance, uh, say on lighting and signage near residential districts? Uh, the second one would be when we get to either now or in the future where technology has the ability to, to rotate or, uh, change the, uh, color or the brightness or both of those for these LED banding. And then, uh, thoughts on regulating, uh, both the brightness and, uh, dimming capability when we're going from night to day. This information, uh, the next couple of slides are new information. This is included in your packet. When we're adjacent to residential, we've got a, a light spill that cannot exceed a point-five-foot candle measured at the property line with, uh, adjacent residential. Uh, this is right in that range with other communities. Uh, in our survey, we discovered a couple communities that are at a point-three-foot candles. I would say most of them are at half or point-five, uh, foot candle. And again, that is not necessarily addressing the brightness of a reader board or a billboard. That is the spill, the, the light spill at the property line. Uh, the second point, uh, signs within the B-one and B-two districts and these are, I, I won't say they're all B-one and B-two, but these are a majority of the districts that share property lines with residential. The B-three district and B-four district, um, are across the street or, uh, across a frontage road or something like that from residential, but the B-one and the B-two are typically where there is a shared property line. Uh, in that situation, um, it is a, uh, signage is limited to business hours or eleven PM, whichever is greater or whichever is later. And that is, uh, specifically spelled out in the, all these items are spelled out in the ordinance now. And finally, illuminated, no illuminated wall sign shall be located on the side of the building where the lot directly abuts a residential district. Again, this is not addressing properties that are across the street from commercial or across the street from residential. This is a shared property line. Generally speaking, uh, the city has not run into a lot of problems with these requirements. Even with the introduction of electronic reader boards and message centers, um, the, I would say the commercial to residential compatibility is not really any better or worse than it was before. We, we don't seem to have a lot of issues in that area. Taking the other two, uh, questions that we had, uh, what if these light bands start rotating in brightness or color? How do we regulate the dimming and the brightness? I've, uh, included some, uh, language, uh, just something to consider, something to talk about here. We have in place, um, uh, a limitation for, uh, changeable copy signs and dynamic display billboards, not to exceed five-hundred nits, uh, at night and seven-hundred fif-, excuse me, seventy-five-hundred, uh, nits during the day. This came out of, uh, our discussion when we looked at dynamic display billboards and when we looked at, um, our reader board changes, uh, there was some discrepancy. Our ordinance had some old language. We were still dealing with, um, I don't want to say foot candles, but we were dealing with some old language. Nits is a specific measurement of how bright the surface of a sign is or a surface of an object. So, that really gets down to, um, we're not talking about spill or glare or anything. We're talking about how bright that sign is. This was put in place in April of this year. Um, we've made adjustments to the reader board that we have out on Nicolet, so it's compliant with that and, um, you can, or you could see a significant change from where it was before to where it is now, um, and the fact that it does dim automatically at sunset. Staff feels this is a, a reasonable change to consider. The other change, and this is a little bit more lengthy, but, uh, this section addresses, um, these architectural features, um, what's considered an architectural feature and how it's calculated. Uh, I've interjected some language from, uh, the changeable copy. Uh, getting to, uh, the color illumination or intensity of these features shall not change more frequently, frequently than one time every thirty seconds. That is consistent with our reader board language. Uh, no, no scrolling, flashing, continuous movement shall be permitted. Each, uh, architectural feature must have a light sensing device that will adjust the brightness, uh, for ambient light conditions. Uh, again, the first half of this is in the ordinance now. The underlined is, um, from separate sections of the ordinance that, that we have that I feel would be, uh, applicable to, um, to the discussion at hand. Uh, so some questions as we get into this discussion. Is this language on the right track? Is this, um, the, is this the direction the, the planning commissions was, was looking to go for the brightness for the, for the ambient light sensors? Are we looking for a, a public hearing? Would you, we like additional discussion on this.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bradrick. Okay, no, I, I prefer you to go ahead and, uh-
Chris, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So, on our sign out here on Nicolet, we, we have a device that dims it as it gets dark, correct? Because it is not as loud, so to speak, as it was when it was first put up.
Yes.
So, uh, and that's an instance where we're not asking anybody to do anything different than what we did as a city. I, I'm in agreement of, uh, I like how we're just taking the language of the changeable signs and, and putting it in here. I would be in full support of that. And I just want to clarify, and I brought this up before and I just want to, if, if we have a, an applicant that has an architectural feature where this banding light is going to be up underneath it and it's just downlighting to accent the building, whereas you're driving up to the building, you don't visually look straight into the light, none of this would affect that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
This is where they actually see the LED bulb is exposed?
Correct. Uh, commissioners, this really gets to, um, or I'm, we're trying to keep this different than, um, I'd call it ornamental or, um, detail lighting that's on a building, uh, that, you know, adds value, but it's not necessarily used for, um, advertising or attraction purposes that, uh, just wanted to-
Well, I guess that was sort of my question. Uh, where I was going to go with it too is, is where, where do we, where's the distinction between an illuminated architectural feature that is decorative? For example, the LED lights on top of the building, uh, the, the high-rise on, on, uh, Parkway. How is it different than even the LED lights on the trees at Porter Creek? Where's the definition that, that keeps them separate? Um, because currently it, if you go to the other, um, right here, it says shall include but not be limited to. So, I'm, you know, I'm struggling a little bit with where it starts and stops too.
Mm-hmm. To be honest, commissioners, it, it's a, a staff interpretation, project by project. Uh, what we're trying to do is, um, one, I would say if it is, um, uh, if it's not on the building, if it's on, if it's uplighting for some landscaping or lights on trees, whether it's holiday or otherwise, um, we would not apply these, these criteria. Yeah, if it's, excuse me, as Commissioner Bradrick said, if it's something where you're seeing the, um, if you're seeing the source of the light, if you're dealing with whether it's a LED band or something else where you're seeing the source of the light, um, we're, we're going to look at it under these criteria.
Okay, excuse me, Chris. Um, so the, the, just for discussion, the, the white lights on top of the high-rise on Parkway are individual lights, but they could be LEDs, whatever. You still are seeing the point source because they are clear glass. How is that different than the blue on top of holiday? Not the blue around the sign itself, but actually the blue band at the top of the parapet? Or are they treated the same and they are not treated under these standards?
I would say, um, I would say they are the same and would be treated under these standards.
Okay.
Obviously, I, I wasn't around when, when the, the Kraus Anderson building went up, but, but looking at holiday, we did get the information on how much LED banding was going up there. We did the calculation, make sure it was within that sign criteria.
Well, and honestly, I think that the lights on top of Kraus Anderson were recently installed. Uh, uh, they haven't been there for years and now they are. And that sort of brings up the next point is how do we manage that if there's a change?
It's, it's an enforcement issue. It, um, how much attention is it getting?
Right.
And it, that's bad to say, but obviously when it's a, when it's a bright blue or a specific color for attention purposes versus going on, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Taheri?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just following, uh, Commissioner, uh, regarding this, this issue here, I, I really think we need to look at project by project base. It's, it's very hard to, in my opinion, to generalize, uh, this ordinance. We could put in place a very basic standard that meet most of the comfortable criterias. And we go based on a project. We may run into a project that meets all the ordinances, but there could be, uh, issues and disagreement in a public hearing, neighbors and public. So, I, I think as long as we have a basics in place, in your opinion, compared to other, other projects, cities, communities, and we go per project and community, uh, the area, we will take it one at a time and-
Commissioners, I agree with what Commissioner Taheri is saying and I commend staff for coming up with this. They've done the research and they have put in, in, uh, language, um, captured in, in the air what we asked them to do and I think I commend them. Commissioners- Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I agree, I like, I like everything here too, but I'm an engineer, so when we talk about brightness, do we quantify that with the nits that you talk about?
Correct.
Do you bring that forward into this, this language?
Yes, that would be, so the, the nits we're covering on this slide, so we're, the nits apply to the changeable copy, whatever we categorize as the architectural features, and we also, they also apply to the billboards. So the brightness is covered there.
Yeah.
The slide addresses really everything the architectural features can and cannot do.
Thank you.
Just one question, I have, no illuminated wall signs shall be located on the side of the building where the lot directly abuts the residential zoning district. What about, I think we talked about it at the last meeting, what about if you have a sign, a light that reflects on the awning? If it, it is on the wall, but it does not give you the full illumination, it reflects on the awning, so to call attention to the awning?
It would depend, it would depend if the awning had signage on it, if there was something on the awning. If we're talking with a downcast, a gooseneck light, or something like that, on a solid black awning, the ordinance would not necessarily regulate it.
Well, I, I would think that to focus the light on the awning, the awning would have probably a sign or a name or, or something.
Then we, we would have a trigger. Onings, when we get into other parts of the sign ordinance, onings that do have a, a logo, name, or something like that is considered signage.
Okay.
When we get into that discussion.
Yes.
But from an architectural standpoint, there might be goals of, of symmetry and things where we might find that we don't want to stop a light band where we abut a residential, we want to continue to wrap the entire building, same thing with a, with an awning. I, I think, I mean, how do we cover that? Are we looking at, at issues of nuisance then, or?
It would be, it would depend what, what stage we're in. If we have the ability, if we're dealing with a land use and we can address it through a conditional use permit, or a PUD, get some additional landscaping for that resident, I don't see that being a problem. If it's, if it's a, I would say after the fact, or a retrofit of an existing building, then our hands are tied a little bit. We don't have, it's not something we could wrap into a public hearing.
We're handling it at the building permit level and planning review and that.
Right.
Commissioner Corey?
Thank you, Chair. Could we handle that by adding in something along this line, where it says, "no illuminated wall sign shall be located on the side of a building where a lot, where the lot directly abuts a residential zoning district unless approved by CUD, or CUP, or PUD?" Would that be appropriate?
Yes, that would be, that would be a, an easy...
That way it has to come, and then people have to, we and the council would have to review it.
And the neighbors.
Yeah.
If they choose... And the neighbors come in and come, and if they have a problem with it, they can come in and say, "we have a problem," and...
So, to clarify that, then, there'd be a trigger that says, "I'm going to build this building, and there's an abutment to a residential property not across the street." If I want to continue my architectural feature all the way around the building, that would automatically trigger it to be a CUP?
Correct.
And then it, it comes in front of this, this in the city council, and we move forward?
Absolutely. That, that works in this...
It's a review.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Corey.
Yeah, very much so.
Very good. Okay, do we need any action on this?
We're going to have to give you an attablance.
We'll...
One, 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 one last question.
Yep.
I promise.
Go ahead.
And I'm probably splitting hairs, but is there any issue to how quickly the color does change when they do change? It, no, no, there's two different things here, there's, if they can change every 30, every 30 seconds, is it, is there a time of transition? To avoid it being jarring to your eye, and catch your eye where maybe it shouldn't?
That's, it's a good question, and it is getting into those, some of those finite details. From, from staff's point of view, looking at the ordinance, it doesn't address it. We've taken the more, I guess we'd call it, I'd call it conservative, the change needs to be instantaneous.
And that's my point, is it used to be mechanical where it actually had a timeframe that you could measure, and now it's electronic where you really can't.
Getting to, and I'm trying to find that language.
And again, I'm just bringing it up because it was...
I thought it was so many changes in a, in a, in a window of time, wasn't it?
Once, no, no more than once every 30 seconds.
Okay.
But that's not the part I'm getting at, it's that when it changes, if it, if it changes, does it grab your eye? Is it, is it a hazard just by how quickly it changes? And again, I'm just bringing it up as a thought.
That's good, we, we've had the same conversations when, when looking at these permits. So we're trying to avoid that the continuous motion, the flashing, the transition.
Right.
So, you've got one message that's sadic for 60 seconds, or, sorry, 30 seconds, boom, it is a different message.
Right.
For 30 seconds.
There's no soft transitions.
There's no, correct.
Okay.
The only example I guess we would have are, are billboards, there is the ad for the city, and then there's the ad for NDSU. The other example is the roof of the Target Tower. Have you seen it? There's the top two stories of the Target Building continues to change.
Yeah.
All the, all the time. Now you're not staring at it with a vehicle.
Right, well, that's my point, is driving in, again, driving into town on 35, when the billboard changes on 35, it changed. It is something that grabs your eye.
In comparison, just not to elongate the discussion, the, the lighting, the, the, I'll call them the wings or the pillars for the AIM Center, we, we gave them, or gave that project a specific deviation because they do, they do transition from one color to the other. It's not a instantaneous look. I think also, you know, that is, that is advertising or attention getting, it's not, hopefully it's not extreme to the point where it's become an issue, but that's something to keep, if you're out and about, there, there is some flexibility with that.
Okay. Commissioner Tejery?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I've seen quite a number of these light signs, some very annoying and some very pleasant. So I really don't think we can, we can come to a conclusion here what is the best and what's not, and that's why I'm going back to my, my previous point, is really is based on project per project base. You may have a project in front of us, perfectly meet all the ordinance, everything, and I personally just don't like it. You've heard that before from other commissioners, who say, "I don't like it, I don't think it's a good idea to have this sign on this building at this time."
It's a work in progress.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can always improve on it, and this is good, good job, and Chris, thanks.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
It also doesn't help when, you know, new technology that's coming out tomorrow that will, you know, that will be...
Negate all of this work.
Yeah.
They're, they're working on the buildings, and, I'm sorry, and there are some buildings that actually curtain wall glasses, it turn into a TV screen, it's motions, I mean, the limit of this technology is...
I believe there's going to be some of that on the Vaulting Stadium.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually glass of the building will become a motion TV.
Well, staff will prep for a public hearing at your next meeting, and they'll give you another shot to, to look at the language.
Very good.
Thank you very much, good job. Any, any updates, Commissioners? Just to like on behalf of the commission to congratulate city council members Keely and Coughlin for their reelection. We pledge our cooperation to work with the city council and to make the best recommendations we can for them. Thank you, guys, thank you, Chris, after the viewing and listening audience, thank you for tuning us in, we appreciate it very much. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 24th, 2014. Motion to adjourn? Motion moved by Commissioner Broderick, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed on a 5-0 vote. Good night, everyone.